On September 23rd, 2020, starting at 6:30 PM, we're going by Zoom. Can be made as for any of these Zoom meetings to public comment at radner.org. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. If you're standing in front of a fixed camera and it shows your face, be careful about standing up so that you don't just show us your pants. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Under God, invisible with liberty and justice.
Justice for all.
I am checking the public comments since that's the next agenda item that we have. Seeing no public comment, we can move on to our next agenda item, which is stormwater and sanitary sewer projects and funding discussion. Bill, could you get us started?
I'd be happy to, and I'll start with thanking all the commissioners for carving out one hour of time for tonight. I know it's difficult with everything going on to have these meetings, so I really appreciate everyone taking the time tonight. Our goal is to to get this presentation done and leave some time at the end for some questions. That being the case, it would probably be the most efficient way to proceed to let us get through the presentations and then address questions at the end, and maybe even more efficient is any any real substantive questions or ones that require a lot of detail and discussion. We can talk offline on. As we get through tonight, we're not looking for absolute decisions. The goal with everything that you're going to hear tonight is working towards installing projects, doing projects. Many of these have been either in the design phase or discussion and design phase for years and years. Some are ready to go, some are getting close to being ready to go. All of them that were included in my memo from back in August, and that was included with our board packet tonight. All of those at one point received board approval in terms of proceeding with hiring an engineering firm to develop engineered installation plans. So what we want to step through tonight is a proposal for your consideration to start moving forward with installing projects. With that, Steve, are you are you manning the the presentation?
Sure, Ian, if you could share my screen, I'll step through for Mr. White.
So how this is how this is going to go is we've prepared this presentation. It'll include and it'll include a very high level refresher on what the projects are. Then we'll step through the the money side of things and the actionable side of things, and then ultimately what the next steps are. Again, all of these projects at some point were authorized by the Board of Commissioners for design. They're at various stages of design, which Steve will touch on in his his part of this presentation. For my part here at the beginning, again, we just wanted to set the table for what we're we're proposing. Again, the goal is to do projects. I know that's that's been discussed in various public meetings for as long as I've been here in Radnor. So hopefully, we've come up with something that is palatable again to at least get the balls, get the ball rolling so that we can start again, start attacking these projects. And then Ian, if we could.
Can you see this? Can you see the first slide?
Who, me?
Anybody.
No, everyone's everyone's smiling faces.
Ian, is my screen being shared?
Steve, it's not. I can switch to my screen if that would be easier.
Hold on one sec. Let's do something else here.
You should be able to screen share right now.
That looks like progress.
Much progress. Hey, Mr. White. Take it away, sir.
Okay, I'm still looking at your Internet Explorer.
It says I am screen sharing.
Yep, yep, and I could see your Internet Explorer, not the present.
Open, open the file.
I can see the file. PowerPoint.
Hang on, let's do this one more time, or we'll get, can you see the special PowerPoint?
Yeah, I see your mouse pointer.
Okay, it's opening it up. It is open.
You have multiple screens.
Steve, try unsharing your screen and selecting the PowerPoint window when you select screen share. Or we can switch over to mine, whichever works.
John has left the room.
Ian, let's for the sake of brevity, let's why don't you just pull it up? I mean, I'm seeing everything everybody else is.
There we go. All right. Ian, if you could just go to slideshow and start slideshow, that would maybe blow it up a little bit. There we go. I think we covered the the screen, the header header screen. So again, I had sent an email or a memorandum out to the board back at at the beginning of August. At the beginning of that memo, it identified or it summarized where we're at with the stormwater fee. $10 per unit generates a million dollars per year. And then it went on to identify it. If you'll recall, for those that were with us for the last couple of years, we've got that monster stormwater spreadsheet that has roughly 55, $53 million worth of projects identified on it. And then from those projects, as I touched on earlier, we have about a dozen to 13 projects that the board is already approved in terms of designing. Those were identified on page one of my memo. Where tonight's discussion is going to deviate from the memo is where we get into how how we could potentially fund these. Before we get into that, Steve, if you could, just step through a really quick refresher on on the projects that we're we're discussing tonight.
Ian, if you could get to the next slide, please. Here's Mr. White's letter. One more, please. And yeah, so I won't get into this spreadsheet because the following slides show a little more detail. But all these projects have been in front of the board for award, as Mr. White noted, for design, except the one, the North Wayne Municipal Parking Lot. That was bannered about but never moved forward on. So I'll just go right to it. Ian, next slide, please. One of the questions we always get is, you know, how do these projects get constructed? So an idea is brought forth to the board, and the board approves or does not approve the design. So in this case, design has been approved on many on many. Some of these projects have been designed since 2018. But unless they're funded, they don't move forward. So if you go to the slide with the little compass and the project is designed, but at this point it is not funded. So that's where we stand with a lot of projects. If the board funds it, a project gets constructed. Next slide, please. This is one that is designed Cumberland Place Storm Sewer, estimated cost 372,000. These dates are based on, you'll see dates. If the board approves funding in short order, these are dates that we could get awarded, we could award these projects. So this is a project that can be completed by 2021. So the Township Street Arbor Road. A lot of runoff comes out there. There's a discharge pipe from the inlets. And what it does is it floods the person on 102 Cumberland Place. So the project would be to install additional piping and inlets connect to our existing system to alleviate the flooding our resident gets from our street that is above him. Next slide, please. This is Arthur Road, project cost 292,000. Again, this is a 2021 project if the board, if it so pleases the board. So there's ponding in the cul-de-sac where the red clouding is. And in the winter, it causes icy conditions. And in the summer and spring months, it's a concern for mosquito borne disease. So we've looked at trying to fix this through paving in other ways, but we can't. The idea would be to install a series of inlets and piping and take it down the street, which is a green line and connect to an existing inlet. Next slide, please. This is the Root and Road Storm Sewer Replacement. So you see a green line, that's our existing storm sewer. The cloud, the clouded area is the storm sewer that is deteriorated. And actually, in a storm two years ago, uprooted trees just uprooted our pipe. So right now, that pipe discharges in somebody's backyard instead of all, instead of going down to the stream. So it's a piece of infrastructure that needs to be repaired. Estimated cost 230,000, again, a 2021 project. Next slide, please. Tree trenches. The tree trenches will provide additional incremental runoff reduction in the North Wayne area, which we all know is hard hit by flooding. They would be installed in the right of way where possible. So the graphics are more very hard to read, and some of the aspect ratios are out of whack. But what it shows is six areas in the North Wayne area that would be a good location for those tree trenches, and there's two alternate sites. It's not a very expensive project, 160,000. Again, this is a a if, so it pleases the board, a 2021 project. Next slide, please. South Wayne Parking Lot. So this has been in design for some time. We had a lot of utility conflicts with this. So Ian, if you could put your cursor on the left, which is actually the outlined area on the left in red, that is the existing South Wayne Lot. We all know what that looks like. The idea is to turn that into a subsurface stormwater management system. So basically, that entire parking lot would be excavated and filled with stormwater management, basically cells to hold runoff and release it at a specified rate. But there is another portion to this. If you look up to your right, I know it's a small screen, that says the Radnor Middle School Field. Under that field is a stormwater system that was installed, predates current staff. I'll say 10, 11 years ago. Well, there was a portion of it that was never connected, a portion of South Wayne, South Wayne Avenue where runoff comes down from 30. That was never connected to that system. So our consultant has been able to do so. So what the other part of this project is, is to continue and continue that project as it was designed and use that unused storage under the middle school field for runoff from South Wayne. So that, if you look down below, it says install subsurface parking lot. This conveyance was in the original design but never completed. So you have storage under the middle school park, middle school field. That's like money in the bank. That's storage that's not being used that we don't have to construct. If you look to the right, this is what the South Wayne Lot would look like. So we've got rid of a lot of the various entrances and exit. It has good flow. It will have green area, small, but there are islands, proper lighting. And I'm actually meeting with Matt Golis next week. The Shade Tree Commission has, I have asked the Shade Tree Commission for their input, and he's going to provide some plantings for that. That's a, this is a large project, but you can see it's multifaceted. It's a big project. It's 3.2 million. This is one that we figure is going to take about six months. So from the award date, if it's 222, it's a six month project if nothing goes wrong. Next slide, please. West Wayne Preserve and Friends of the Radnor Trail Park. We had a town hall meeting convened by Commissioner Jake Abel to go through the residents. So the West Wayne Preserve was purchased by the township for stormwater management. So if you look at the slide on the picture on the left, if you see that area outlined in red, doesn't show much because all the trees, but that's the area that corresponds to the one on the right. The outlined area on the right is what would become stormwater management. And basically, a lot of that would be wetland creation, as well as a new pipe under the the trail. This is designed to address a lot of the flooding that occurs on South Devon Avenue when it spills out of there. If you look on the left, you'll see the blue outline, that's Friends of the Radnor Trail Park. The corresponding work on the right is what we're proposing for Friends of the Radnor Trail Park, what people call the dog park portion, would be a subsurface system. So when we're completed that, you would have use of the park, nothing would change. Further to the right, we're proposing not just subsurface system, but also porous paving for the what is now that stone parking lot, as well as inlets out on West Wayne Avenue to reduce the flooding that occurs under the underpass. Next slide, please. That's again, another large project, 2.4 million. Next slide, please. Mail and Road Culver, this is, this has really been hanging around for a long time. There's two, what we call stovepipe pipes underneath there. They're old riveted rusty pipes. They're deteriorating badly. The road has been subsiding for years, and the public works guys keep patching it. The right hand side shows the proposed culvert that we would put under there. We're still working through some utility issues with PICO, but the project itself is designed. This is an infrastructure project, but this this is actually getting long overdue. Estimated cost of 1.6 million. Next slide, please. North Wayne Flood Plate Flood Plane Creation Project. So this is such a vast project, it's very hard to show in a couple of pictures. So we just outlined Gulf Creek. So Meliora, through their studies and our town meetings, determined that the way to manage the most water for the most efficient cost would be to create floodplain along Gulf Creek. And we've been meeting with residents ever since. So there's 110 properties included with this project that we we need to to use to create the floodplain. We've met with 70, and there's literally just a handful of folks that haven't agreed to sign on. This is a is a really big project, 2.9 million. And I say big, I just mean in size and scope. And you haven't seen something of this scope for floodplain creation anywhere that I know of close by. And if if we are able to do this project, I think it would be somewhat groundbreaking to show how we can address stormwater and flooding floodwater reduction through the creation of floodplain as opposed to physical structures all the time. Next, so this one has an award date of 2021 because we have to meet with all our residents and get the easements completion date of 2022, so it's not as specific. Next slide, please. North Wayne Municipal Lot, this one isn't designed, but it was talked about for a few years, and and the trigger was never pulled. So this project, I think everybody's familiar with the North Wayne Lot. First off, we would need some cooperation with the Wayne Presbyterian Church because they own portion of it. The idea for this would be, this would not be a stormwater management system. This would manage the runoff from that parking lot with the use of porous paving and subsurface systems. The other bonus you get out of that is similar to what would happen down in South Wayne. We could address the the flow of the park, of the parking lot. We could put in proper lighting, proper islands. I think it would be, and it would also, there was some runoff concerns Wayne Presby has, so we could address them in that. So this is another one where the whole parking lot goes away. Subsurface system goes in, porous paving. So this isn't managing water from around it, it is managing this massive piece of impurpius right there. 1.6 million. Again, this is a 2021, 2022 project. Next slide, please. Cornerstone Basin retrofit. So as part of our pollution reduction plan, which has not yet been approved by DEP, this is one of the ones that stuck out the most as far as a basin that doesn't fully utilize all its potential. So on the left, the red line indicates the actual basin. The green cloud is where the retrofit would take place. Now, one thing to note, we can move forward even though our PRP is not approved yet, but we would still get credit for it. But we have not spoken to the HOA. And Cornerstone HOA provided easements for the Radnor Cap Trail, which was great, but we've never really sat down with them and fully gone through this. Next slide, please. The Highview Outfall, this is another project that's been going on for a couple of years. We've been talking with the residents. There may have to be some easements or redirections done. That's why there's no specific date. But if you look at the picture on the left and you look in the background, what you see is pieces of concrete pipe that have just fallen off or lying, they're just strewn about. And there's a huge gully. That manhole stands about 12 feet high. The next picture shows it from the side. It's created a very serious condition in these two residents' backyards. And what we're proposing, extend the pipe, fill that gully into a point and make it safer for them. And this is a 2021 project. Next slide, please. The last one we have is the Worcester Road Outfall. So there's probably hard for you to see, it says Township Storm Sewer Outfall. The lower left text box points to a pipe that is ours from Worcester Road. That discharges between these two lawns, and what it's done is create a gully, a trench, an eroded trench, it's it's not safe. And further down, it's even more so. So estimated cost is $330,000. This would be, again, this is a general date because there are a lot of these projects do require easements. And the ones that require easements, I'm putting in the general date because although the design and bidding of a project isn't a problem, if there are easements, that may take some time to work through that with the residents. But this project is basically designed at this point. We're working with the residents and we'll be meeting again with them week after next to to get their final input. They've had their plans for some time. Next slide, please. So I will turn this back over to Mr. White. And as he had said, if anybody has very specific questions about the spreadsheet or any of the slides or any of the projects, feel free to contact me offline, and we can spend time and I can step you through them step by step. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. All right, so shifting gears, well, before we shift gears, maybe just a good way to to summarize all of those projects again is just the reason why those projects were discussed here tonight and included on the memorandum is because they have been either discussed publicly or again, the board has decided to design them or spend money to design them. So understanding that we have a much, much larger list of stormwater projects that is included in our 2020 budget, all of it is for the most part unfunded. It seemed appropriate that to address the projects that have already been designed, get those satisfied and off the list, and then we can refocus on the remaining portions of the list. So I know there's various projects in there that are that appear low impact or only a handful of houses. We have, if you go through the the listing of projects on the spreadsheet, there are many, many of those. Again, these ones were included here tonight because they've been designed or or in design. So the, again, what we're proposing here tonight is is to put forth a proposal on how we can fund getting those projects installed and then kind of set the table then for the township going forward with future projects. So if we if we jump over to the next slide, we're going to take a look at our stormwater fee exists now at $29 per unit. That has been the fee since the board originally adopted the rate back in 20, I think. It is billed in annual increment, so you get one bill a year, and that generates a million dollars per year. So what we're proposing is to take that million dollars that we're currently getting on the current fee and break it up into three different pieces to going forward or as part of this plan. So the largest piece is this half million dollar piece. The intention of that would be to address these, the smaller stormwater projects. Many of those are, Steve stepped through, ones that have already been designed. Again, the the larger unfunded stormwater list has many, many more. So if we carved out half, half of the annual revenue, that would allow us to address one, two, maybe three of those projects annually. So as we go into the budget season every year, we would say, all right, these are the three that are the highest priority. And the board would approve it as part of the budget. And those projects would be done on an annual basis, and that would reset every year. We'd get those projects done, they'd be done, we'd move on to the next, the next round of projects. The next category of funding, 250,000, we would allocate that towards the debt service that'll be necessary on those larger projects that Steve stepped through. So as you saw, many of those carry with it expenses greater than a million dollars, some greater than two, some almost three to four million. So with a a revenue source that's generating $1 million per year, you can see, and it's understandable why that we've struggled to get off the ground with some of these larger projects because the cash just isn't, isn't there. So what we're going to propose is a type of financing to get those larger projects done and then allocate a portion of the current revenue towards paying the future debt service on those projects. Again, that it, the 250 will be helpful, A, to show or to demonstrate that part of the $29 fee that was originally adopted is going towards flood mitigation projects. And B, by doing so, we're decreasing the amount of fee increases in future years based on the added debt service. And then the final piece is this other 250,000. On an annual basis, the board is voting to award design contracts for future projects. So the these dollars would be used for those decisions as they come up. It would also, it's also necessary to fund these little emergency projects that pop up from time to time. You'll actually see one at the October 5th meeting. We've got a really small pipe that's it's Swiss cheese at this point and needs to be replaced. I think the ballpark of that project's 25,000. So there there will need to be a certain portion of the the current fee set aside to address those little types of issues that come up. And then lastly, if if in any given year, we have some of these smaller projects that we've carved out the half million for, and let's say that the total for a particular year is 600,000 instead of five, we would use Porsche, a portion of this 250 to cover that gap. So we're proposing to take the current fee, break it up into these three pieces, which leads us to the the next slide. So this is the list of projects that Steve just stepped through. And they're organized in terms of time. Again, basically, on those individual slides. Formatting got a little. But these are the projects. So what we've done. I don't know if everyone else is getting their feedback, but.
Jack, I think you need to go on mute.
Let's see if that does the trick. Otherwise, it's you take and we know how much you get along. So what this table is doing is it's taking those projects as Steve stepped through a moment ago, and we've allocated them into two different broad categories. We've got projects that are less than a half a million. Those are identified in green. And then we got projects greater than a half million identified in blue. So in this annual cash need for smaller projects section here in the middle, we've allocated the various projects. We've spread them out over this three year period and at with the goal of being around a million, a half million a year or less than. There is cash in the fund, and we could accelerate these projects based on that cash. We could add other projects to it if if the board would like to to review and discuss those. So this is more just kind of setting the table to for you to get a visual of what this might look like on an ongoing basis. But we would take these smaller projects, allocate them out over multiple years, and we would know. and we would know that at today's rates, we would have enough money to fund those. Then the new part of what we're proposing tonight is this annual financing. And what we're proposing at this point to get these projects done, these ones identified with the blue amounts, is that we would go out to RFP for a, a bank loan with a line of credit in the ballpark of $13 million, plus or minus. And then we would draw down on that as these various projects are awarded by the commissioners. And as Steve pointed out during his portion, these will take some time. Even if we got started tomorrow, the funding, on the funding side, we wouldn't be ready for at least two, three months. So what we're proposing is that we talk this plan out over the next month or so, ultimately make a decision. And then we can have the bank loans set up in the early part of 2021 and allow these projects to stay on track. The, the benefit of, so what I had presented in the memorandum from August was just a real simple 30-year fixed-rate, $15-million borrowing, which is nice and easy, but the problem with that is, is that we've borrowed money for projects that may, that will not be ready to install for at least a year or two. So we're paying interest. And more importantly, we would have to consider adjusting the stormwater fee to pay for that debt service. So if we jump to the next slide, the real benefit of doing the draw is that we're only, obviously, we're only paying interest on what we've borrowed. And there is a small fee on the available amount of line of credit. I don't want to get it too far into the details, but they're all built into the numbers that you're seeing on this table here. So again, we're looking at $13 million. This table is comparing bond fining, a traditional bond fining financing with what, what we're recommending to be the better course, and that's some sort of bank loan. The debt service projected in year one is, they're, they're the same between the two plans and the bank loan, about $150,000. But really where the savings comes in is in years two and three, where you can see that the debt service on the bank loan is significantly less because again, we're only borrowing, we're only paying on what we've borrowed and not the full 13 million all up front. So you can see a considerable savings over just those three years. And then ultimately, once all of these projects are done, the final bills have been paid, they've been installed. We have the option of bundling it all together and doing a, you know, a long-term municipal fixed-rate bond, as we would typically do. And that's what this last row is showing is so if we do 30-year bonds for these projects, years four through 24, the debt service on those are going to be about the same because we're, we're anticipating doing the same type of long-term bond financing on those. So let's jump to the next slide and take a look at what this means in terms of paying for it. The first table on top is showing what the first three years might look like. So as I touched on earlier, we're taking, or we're proposing to take 250,000 out of the current revenues and dedicate it towards paying debt service on this financing. So you can see in the first three years, that 250,000 will cover any of the debt service issued to do those projects. So in the first three years, we should be in good shape, all things being equal. In years 24 through 51, we would have a net new debt service expense projected around 400,000. Because in any way, any way you carve it, you know, borrowing $13 million carries with it about a $640,000 annual debt service. Again, that's, that's at.
Estimated interest rates.
Based on today's market in 30 years. Those are obviously variables that'll change over the next couple of years. So under, under, you know, no matter what we do, there is going to be some new debt service expense associated with borrowing these monies and installing these projects. We feel like phasing it in makes the most sense because we're only paying interest and, you know, not charging people for, for projects that haven't been installed yet. We're matching the fee with the installation of the projects and the benefit of the projects. So the, the last slide in this section, if we go to it, this forecasts out what the stormwater fee might look like if we utilize the fee, the fee system that, that we've established to pay for this. So looking at the residential portion of this, which if you're familiar, the stormwater fee is, is, there's two different categories of payers. There's the residential component. Those are in units of one, two, three, and four, based on your lot size. And then we have the other part of the, the fee payer, which is other developed properties. That is a, that is based on actual impervious, an actual impervious calculation reduced to a square footage and then multiplied by the rate. So the table on top here shows what the, the new debt service expense of roughly 400,000, divided by the number of billing units in the township, equates to a $45.31 new debt service per billing unit amount. Again, that's a, that's an annual number. So the current billing unit fee would be, is 29. It would go to 74.31. And then the table below shows what the, the annual residential impact would be. So for those homes that are paying at one unit, they would go from an annual bill of $29 to 74.31. And likewise, those, those properties with the, the larger property sizes that are paying on four units would go from 116 to 297.24. Again, those are annual bills. So, and I think that, that wraps up this section of the, the presentation, if I'm not mistaken. If we go to the next slide, that'll tell me what I need to know. So yeah, end of slideshow.
So Bill, are those all proportional increases?
Proportional in what way?
Per unit.
Yeah, I mean, that's just the algebra of taking the number of billing units and dividing it by the amount of new revenue needed to pay for the debt service.
What's the percentage increase for people who have one unit? The percentage increase for people who have two units? The percentage increase that people have three units? And a percentage increase that people have four units?
Well, that last table showed what the dollar amount would be. So you would go from 29, for those at one unit would go from 29 to 74. So 110%, but it's a $45 annual increase.
Again, I mean, is, is that proportional? Or are the people who pay the, at least currently paying the highest percentage increase? So I, I need to see the percentages on that, right? How, what's the percent increase for, for each person? For each homeowner?
Same for each unit. So if you have one unit, you'd be paying about, according to what Bill did in the math in his head, I won't hold him to it, you'd be paying 110% more than you were before. If you had three units, which is about an acre, you would be paying 110% more than you were before, et cetera. But depending on how many units you have, the dollar figure would be different from person to person because you're starting with more or less in terms of your starting figure.
Yeah, bear with me just a second. I mean, I can do the math real quick.
Yeah, let's see the percentage increases to be sure. So I can't tell by those increases what the percentages are. That's my question, is it totally proportional?
So yeah. Hold on, I got, I got the presentation up on a different screen here. That's why I'm looking away, but just make sure I've got the math right. So we'd go from 29 to 74. So I rounded it to the nearest dollar and assumed a $45 increase. So yeah, the, the folks at one unit would go from 29 to 74, 155%. The folks at four units would go from 116 per year to 296 per year. That's 155%. So it is proportional at the residential now. Which I'm sure all the math professors are out there like, yeah, I could have told you that in a sec, but always like, always like it's hell to verify it.
Thank you.
So again, hopefully that paints a picture, at least a picture that will allow us to start addressing these smaller projects immediately with the cash that we have in the fund and the annual revenue that we're collecting based on the $29. And at the same time, hopefully the, the financing piece makes sense and, and provides a mechanism to, to address some of these larger projects, again, that we've been spending years talking about. The goal being to get these done, get these installed over the next two, three, four years. And understanding that we have, we have a whole nother portion of this stormwater project list that will need addressing over time. But we have to get off square one. And if we can get these projects satisfied and done, we will have impacted a great number of residents in Radnor Township. I think, I mean, I didn't do award analysis on this, but based on Steve's portion of the presentation, we've touched just about every section of town in one way or another. And if, if you do that with all the projects on the spreadsheet as it is, it is, it is from corner to corner of the township. So that's, that's the proposal. I'm happy to answer some high-level questions. And then as I touched on at the beginning, I'm happy to get into a lot more details on the numbers and, and anything else. We've got Bob here who's actively working on refunding. So we've got the, the banking folks at, they're working for us right now. So we can get quick answers on, on those types of things as well, so.
Just don't understand, you're looking for, from us today, just what is our appetite to move forward with this program and do additional research? We are not voting on a bond, we're not voting on these particular projects. We're not debating the order of the projects that we would get started on. It's just we're giving feedback to staff on, should you guys spend your valuable time on this?
Yes, sir. And I will hand it off to you guys to, to fire away.
I think it sounds fine, except for the increase, 155% is too much. So we've got to work on that. The question is, what about the $3 million that's sitting there right now?
No, that's.
I mean, I, I hate, I understand you'd want to borrow money now because it's cheap, but you know, there's $3 million you haven't spent. So we put 13 million in, how, what if all these get delayed again? And we still have 13 million or a bank, a bank revolver that is not. I, I mean, I guess the revolver takes care of that, right? So that's, that's a good thing. But what's the plan for spending down the current 3 million?
Yes, so I, I didn't want to, I didn't want to make those kind of assumptions in tonight's presentation. This was more just modeling. But when, when it comes time to make decisions on projects and move and actually adopt a plan, yes, the, the spend down of those funds should definitely be part of it. And that will allow us to, again, advance some of the smaller projects or maybe, I mean, it may not reduce the amount we need to finance because not included in the list of projects tonight are a handful of other multimillion-dollar projects. So it may just shift those to other projects. But in any case, when we, when, when it comes time to actually adopt a plan, the, the money in the, in the fund now should definitely be part of it and part of the spend down.
I think the revolver is a good idea so we don't borrow all the money up front. And I think that spending down those funds will be the key to, to doing it efficiently. But the, the increase in the tax to the, to the fee is, is a shot that we need to work and try to minimize that. I, I think 155 sounds like too much.
So I want to be mindful of the time. Is there anybody else for whom the fee increase is an absolute bar to moving forward with this? Because I haven't reverse engineered the numbers, but I don't think that we would be able to move forward with this bond without increasing the fee, at least to some extent.
Yeah, I, I think for me, that's, it's too much. A lot of the people were, that I represent that live in Garrett Hill, live on fixed incomes, and that's going to be one big, it's, it's just, it's way too much. And I'm with Rich, I guess, get that money is cheap. My issues are with stormwater, I think maybe we're building too much. I think that we need to look at that as a primary concern. It's great that money's cheap, but raising it that high, yeah, does give me a pause to step back. So yeah, I, I, I'm a kind of, it's, it's just too big. You're, you're tripling it, and it just doesn't seem like there's any end in sight.
Anybody else?
Jack, my opinion is that I am strongly for this, and I am not afraid, given the flooding and the priorities in the third ward, given the very strong voices that I heard in third ward from the middle school all the way through to the police station on this, and anyone that is in that floodplain of Ithing Creek has felt the pain. They've lost cars, they've lost property. They are constantly paying with plumbers, dealing with backup generator issues, sump pumps. The list go on and on as these storms get larger and larger. And I am going to post to my page this evening, the videos taken from my porch. I sit right in the middle of it here, as do my neighbors up and down the St. Catherine's corridor. And not afraid of this increase. This is past time, it's past due, and we need to move on these projects in the township.
Also, I think I'm for, I'm for this, but we just got to work on how, how we soften this blow. It makes sense to do this, but we got to work on how, how we soften it. Also, Steve Norzini, I think you would say that this doesn't guarantee that all this stuff will end either, does it?
Well, Commissioner, as, as the manager noted, this is just a portion of the projects. So we have a list of projects, right? These are ones that have been designed for a couple of years or in design.
Well, I mean, I mean, if this doesn't guarantee that all flooding will be solved.
No project guarantees that flooding will be solved. All projects are flood reduction projects. They are not, they are not going to remove flooding.
So can I just, so Bill, I noticed on the one slide, you did say that some of this increase could be phased in, you know, since we really don't need to tap into it. So I'd be interested to see kind of what you guys are thinking around that. You know, we do, these projects, you know, have, I've been sitting on this board, what, for three years now? These projects, you know, we've approved. I, I love this list that you've come up with. I know that we have a much bigger list of projects, but you know, as I said, and we voted and we've approved and these things are moving forward, you guys are doing the preliminary work. You know, I think that this is, you know, it's time for us to, to move and act on these projects. And I like the way you've also kind of designated the stormwater fund, the, the portions of the stormwater fund so that people can see exactly where, you know, those monies are going. And we, right now, and we certainly have heard, you know, the, the money just goes to the fund, and we certainly are using it, and we have used it for different projects. But I like the way it's designated, we can clearly see it, and then we'll have the money moving forward. So I would be in favor of you guys continuing to explore this, and I would like to see how the increases could be phased in or minimized, to Rich's point.
Yeah.
If that's possible.
One idea, just real quick, is we do have the, the money in the fund. And perhaps instead of using that money to install projects, a portion of that money could be used to spread the, the fee out over more years. So we use the cash in the bank to use, to pay for debt service that maybe allows for a, I'll make up a number, a six-year phase-in of, of the fee instead of a one-year. So, or one, three, I mean, make up the, the, the phase-in period, but it, it could be another use of the money that's sitting in the fund now to help soften that blow.
I think it's a good idea to look at that.
Yeah, I, I agree. I want to, I want to see more. I would like to see what it looks like, sort of spread out a little farther to mitigate the. Sort of spread out a little farther to mitigate the, sort of the pain of the increase. But I know this work needs to get done and I thank you for really putting, sort of sharpening your pencil on this one. And I think you've, you've given us some really good solutions. So I would like to continue to learn more about the effect on the constituents.
One other question on the revolver that you're, or the, I, I call it revolving line of credit with the bank. How would you, how would you guarantee the interest rates for draws that are in the future? Does, would those interest rates be able to be fixed at the acquisition of the revolver or are they going to, are they going to be variable as we go?
Yeah, Bob, correct me if I, I misspeak here, but my understanding is, is that through the RFP, we can set the parameters how we would like. If we want to see a fixed rate for a certain period of time, we can ask for that in the RFP. Chances are the numbers will come back a little higher with the guaranteed fixed rate. We might get lower rates if we allow for some flexibility for increases. But ultimately, we can, we can design the RFP for both, to be quite frank, and, and compare them. But I think in either case, what we're going to have to include in the RFP is some sort of estimated draw schedule, which we'll have because we'll, we will have talked about the, the installation of these projects and the timing. So hopefully that, that answers.
Okay.
Yeah, we would have options. We'd have A and B.
Do you guys have what you need from us?
I think we do. We'll come, we'll come, we will work on a, a more phased-in approach on the, the, the fee side. We'll incorporate the cash balance, both in terms of drawing in additional projects that are ranked high in terms of their need scoring, as well as looking at using that cash to soften the, the fee side. So we've got our
One other thing with that, Bill, because if, if it's, if the revolver is going to be subject to this large increases in interest rate, maybe it is worth it to borrow the whole thing upfront and have the money at the lowest possible interest rates that we have right now. So that's, that's what I'm, all these things. If you work your models, I know you can get the optimum combination.
Yep. Yeah, yes. And we, we have the numbers on borrowing it right now. The, the numbers that I included in the presentation tonight are, again, based on today's interest rates at 30 years. So we, we've got a baseline to start on there. What we'll, what we'll work on with our, with PFM is modeling out some of these variable rate revolving loan options.
What are your thoughts on moving forward and how, and you know, selfishly, I'm going to say, you know, one of those projects for, for this year is, you know, in my ward and it is, you know, a, a system infrastructure that needs to be repaired that was installed by the township. And it is detrimental to some residents who may have been waiting probably more than, you know, 12 years for some sort of fix on this and things are getting worse and worse. So, and I know that that exists for many, you know, you know, all these projects, but I'm just wondering what's your, what's your timing? Like how, like, you know, how can we move this forward? When would we be coming back so we can continue to consider these things and move it for, move it along?
Yeah, so if we're okay on the carving up the million dollars a year into those different tranches that I described, even if we're not sold yet on the exact amounts, we can, we can identify projects and, and award those now. Steve, Steve talked about those already being designed, many of those already being designed. So we can, we can have those on a future agenda, a near-term future agenda to, to get going on. So I mean, if, if you give us the direction, it doesn't have to be during this meeting, but if, if you give us the direction, we're ready to go.
And Commissioner, if I could add, so if you look at that spreadsheet, it, it notes award dates. That was to allow for the financing to get in place. But working with Mr. White, if there are projects that the board wants to move up, they could be moved up. But you'll see the earliest ones are award dates of 222, I think it was 222, 2021. Those, those award dates could be moved up. And those projects, those smaller projects could be done and this could be complete in the second quarter of 2021.
So I mean, we're up against 7:30. So what maybe I'll suggest is take a look at the, the table that we presented. And we'll distribute this presentation to all the commissioners. We'll post it online for the public as well. Take a look at the table that has, we had it, we had the projects forecasted in future years. And we could start working off of that. And any of the, I mean, whatever we want in 2020, we can put in there. We've got the cash.
Perfect. Okay, guys, we are at 7:30. I think we have good instruction for staff. I'm going to read the only public comment that I have received. If I can get it up. Don't make that a meme. Here we go. Good evening. Thank you all for convening tonight to talk about funding and priorities for our stormwater engineering program. As we saw again in August, we have a dangerous situation with a great deal of life and property at risk. We had numerous rescues and emergency calls that day, as we have had many times during storm events. The risk township-wide for all residents. It's particularly bad for residents whose homes are inundated and surrounded with polluted water. But the flooded roadways and parks and school damage is bad too. Projects that will start to address past wrongs in where stormwater is directed are vital and need to get funded and built. As the PADEP knows, we have flood events at least eight in the last 10 years that spread sanitary sewage into township waterways and the watershed. We need to get these issues addressed and do it using what engineering experts consider the best approach, green infrastructure and bio retention. We need to make this township climate resilient. I know this board leadership is committed to fixing this longstanding issue. Please act with urgency to get these projects underway. Gail Morrison, Wayne. Okay. That's all I have. Guys, thank you very much for the meeting. I know that there is some sewer issues that we haven't gotten to. We will put them on the very next agenda. I think the stormwater, at least for the moment, is the most important issue and we can continue to address these sewer stuff as we go forward with budget. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.